Looks like we are now streaming live on YouTube. And we're being recorded.
Okay.
We're ready.
Thank you very much. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order at 9:34 a.m. It's an electronic meeting being held in accordance with Section 238 Municipal Act 2001 to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'd like to confirm that all members of council are present, which we'll confirm quorum. Nobody is absent. We also have our clerk is here. Our CIO is not with us right now that I can see, but I'm assuming he will be joining us shortly.
I just found him.
And just letting him in the meeting right now, as well as many other members of our senior management team. Input for today's agenda was a TML public comment. At Muskogalakes.ca, we have not received any input on today's agenda. Motions have been pre-populated, random movers and seconders, as we're getting used to, and voting is by raising your hand. I do have a first resolution that's moved by councillor Ever, second by councillor Hayes. Be resolved pursuant to Section 232 of National Procedure Bill 201979. The rules of procedure are suspended for the duration of strategic plan refresh, August workshop series, session three, and that they be reinstated at the conclusion of said workshop. All those in favor? And Park, I see everybody. That is very much. I'm going to turn the meeting over here momentarily to. We have no disclosure. Let me ask, any disclosures of interest, I guess officially I should ask? We have none. We have one invited delegation, which is Strategy Corp, to lead us through today's discussion. For those people who just joined on as well, in about 20, 25 minutes, I'm going to have to jump off this call. And councillor Edwards will take over for me while I'm gone, and then I'll try and jump back into the Zoom call later on. So, Chris, over to you.
Great, thanks. Good evening, councillors. It's great to be with everybody for our third workshop session for the strategic plan refresh. So from a procedural perspective, we're going to continue on, much like we have been in terms of making sure that that everybody has an opportunity to comment on the key pieces. Lexi, if we can project the deck and start on slide six, which distills all the good work that we did last week. As you recall, last week, we did put ourselves in a position where we now have a draft vision, a draft mission, and draft strategic goals for the strategic plan. Our focus today, after we review our work of last week and just validate that, will be to begin to think through and put down strategic initiatives under each of the three goals that we came out with from last week's session.
Chris, I just need to jump in. Whoever's hosting the meeting, do you mind just enabling shared screens, just so that I can share the document, please? Thank you.
Okay, we'll just give that a moment, so everybody can see it, but it says slide six in your workbooks. Perfect. Thanks, Lexi. So, as we said, what we've done here is we've put together a bit of a, what we call strategy architecture that enumerates everything that we've worked on together, from the vision, the mission, the values, and the goals. What I'd like to do is to go through, beginning in Ward C, to get individual councillors' comments on any and all of the elements that are here, and any edits or changes that we can take away and make. And then we'll get into talking about the initiatives under each of the goal areas that we set last week. So I am going to start with Ward C. And I'm going to start by asking councillor Kelly for your comments on the work accomplished to date.
I think the vision is terrific. I think it's fine as it is. The mission itself. I'll just say that it's fine as well. I think it's a little mundane, but maybe as a mission, it's supposed to be. I don't know how far down you want me to take it. Values?
Yeah, values and goals, please, councillor.
Okay, I like the values a lot. Respect, excellence, leadership, resilience, and sustainability are key. The verbiage underneath each of those is fine as well. I think we need some, obviously, some work to do to fill out some of the goals, initiatives under each of these things. And I think that's going to be the acid test, whether we can set for ourselves, as a team, some some markers for achievability essentially, for achievement essentially, to make sure that we're tracking on the right things and we're achieving the goals that we've set for ourselves. So that's it.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Bridgman.
Thank you. I'm good with vision. I'm good with mission, resilience. I'm still having, and I think we said we were going to define that somewhere, because I know we talked about that last time. It doesn't speak to me what the definition of it in terms of resilience is bouncing back to me, and I'm having a little difficulty with just that part. The goals are good, and as councillor Kelly said, it's the initiatives that we put in place that are really going to define whether we're going to get the job done or not. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor Bridgman. Councillor Jaglitz.
Thank you. I had made two suggestions for the vision statement, which I see have not been changed, so I'll just submit them again. And of course, you'll decide whether they're appropriate. And the second sentence, I believe it should say, "These will be protected and enhanced, and then for future generations, and then while encouraging thriving communities, not ensuring." I'll leave that with you. I'm okay with values. As I indicated again at the last meeting, I believe that the third goal is supposed to include our relationship with the district. But I don't believe it's strong enough. It doesn't stand out enough. I would prefer it to be a separate goal. But hopefully, it will be stronger when we get to the initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Roberts.
Yes, I'm good with everything written here, except for a caveat that the vision statement must, can't be decided by by council, since we involved the public last year in their input to vision, so we should get feedback from them. The, I'm supportive of what councillor Jaglitz changes to the vision that's written there. I'm having difficulties, as is councillor Bridgman, with resilience. I don't, to put any key measurements to that, it's a bit of a struggle at this time. We need clarity. Other than that, I'm okay.
Great. Thanks, councillor Roberts. Councillor Mason.
Thank you. Vision, I'm supportive of councillor Jaglitz's additions. I think that those are great. And mission, I still continue to struggle with. It seems to me in some ways, we're repeating the vision. And I think that's what bogs me down a little bit. To me, the understanding of a mission is it's how we deliver against a vision, maybe not repeating that that's what we're striving for. So perhaps a slight rewording to something like, hold on. "Council staff and public will pursue the vision by working together with integrity and executional excellence." Because that's to me, the, and this is a question I asked last week, is that are we not supposed to be saying what we're supposed to be doing in order to deliver the vision? So how it is set out right now, it's just saying that we are going, how we're going to do it is to set clear and respectful expectations of each other, and we're going to work together. But the other parts are related to vision, so I might recommend just a different approach to the mission. The values, I like the thoughts around resiliency. That is one that I struggle with as well. And I just wonder, it sounds funny when it says "that is defined by our rugged." I don't know, maybe that's what I'm getting tripped up on as well. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but resilience is, we want to be sure that the things that we are doing are able to sustain things, i.e. a flood, i.e. a pandemic, i.e. whatever is going to happen in the future. So perhaps even taking out the "that is defined by our rugged" and just saying resilience in our healthy natural environment and our communities. So if we're set on having resilience as a value, just to rework on that. Under leadership, I'd like to consider adding a few other things. Sorry, I have written them over here. Leadership that brings our stakeholders together. I think that's what we're talking about there. Leadership that values our employees and their inherent strengths. And leadership that encourages innovation and creativity. So while what we are trying to do is preserve and protect, I think it's requiring us all to be innovative and creative in how we do that in a world that is relentlessly changing at a furious pace around us. So I think it's important that we have that characteristic and value in there somehow. The word respect, as much as I do, I love the word respect. I think I keep coming back to that word integrity, because to me, part of integrity is trust and respect in all of our relationships and what we do. So not trying to, you know, if we land on respect, I'm fine with that. But I guess the larger word I would have chosen would have been integrity, because inherent in that is respect and trust. As for the goals, underneath the preserve and protect, I feel a bit like we're just repeating whatever the headline is on that. So I guess continue to preserve. I think I need a little bit more time to think about that. I'm not sure we need to add in environment and wildlife characteristics simply, because I think that was what was implied under natural environment. It certainly wasn't our vision, so. Yeah. As far as, I think once we get to the initiatives and we start to see all this flow together, some of this will just resolve itself.
Yep. That's great. Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you very much. I'm fine with everything, really. I think in mission note, how do you get the residents to be excellent stewards when some of them aren't? That's one of the things I would say, and that because there are some people really don't care too much for the environment. Resilience, if you cut down a hundred-year-old tree, you've got to wait almost 100 years for it to bounce back, so. You know, and that, but like I say, I can live with the living that you have, but there's, you could sit in pickholes in most of this stuff, but I can live with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Zavits.
Thank you. Listen, I'm certainly supportive of councillor Jaglitz's comments on vision. I support those, the addition of those two words. Other than that, I hate to say it's minutia, but I do think to councillor Mazan's point, this will fall out of all this bag of tools that we've now created. So I'm not going to have much more to say on anything other than the vision piece. I think those two words added from councillor Jaglitz are great. And I'm looking forward to sharing some initiatives based on the goals as set. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, councillors. Councillor Hayes.
For Frank's comments, I have no problem with them, but I would keep the ensuring thriving communities rather than encouraging thriving communities. I think that the, our health of our communities is at the base of the health of our municipality. And I'm still struggling with resilience. If you left it out, I would be happier. If you keep it in, I can live with it. Everything else is fine.
Excellent. Thank you. Councillor Nishikawa.
Sorry, I don't know what's happened.
We can hear you.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't want to go over the vision and the mission anymore. I don't necessarily. I believe that it could be a little better, but I think we're going to have 10 different versions. I accept whatever else is written under the values. I myself don't understand the respect, or at least that title. I think it could be ordered a little differently, and in fact, I almost want to say honor diversification, because there's so many changes going on in our community that. I mean, yes, they all deserve respect, but there are so many things happening that we are, in fact, are not recognizing the changes. So, and then I just would have to work through the goals to actually see what we're going to come up with to comment on the rest of it.
Great.
Unless you wanted me to go through all the goals at this point.
If you have comments on them, we'd welcome those now.
So, I mean, I have a bunch of things written down. I'm just not sure if that's how, where to be inserted. So you would like specific initiatives?
When we get to the next part of the agenda, yes.
That's what I meant. Okay, I'll pass on.
Perfect. Excellent. And Mayor Harding.
Thank you. The word, I'll go skip vision and mission for a brief second. I'll circle back. The word resilience, you know, defined by our rugged character, I'm not sure how the rugged character, natural environment is resilience. I think resilience, to me, another way of saying is an ability to adapt. So I'm not sure what that's there. In the goals under enhancing sustainable or sustainable services, the last sentence, improve and strong relationships with other governmental partners, I think the word with is missing. The one thing, as I look at the overall page, you know, there's a environmental theme. Environment is in the vision. It's in the mission. It's in excellence. It's in resilience. It's in sustainability. It's in protect the national. As opposed to building on one another and everything working together, mission building, we could just say environment. I'm not really trying to overwork things, but I know where council, I know where the public, because we really have never put the word environment in. I'm just a little bit hesitant that we are overly putting it in every single aspect of everything we do, which as a cornerstone, as a value, you know, I think as a value, we could just say the environment. And we value the environment. Might be a way to integrate it into everything of which we do. I'll leave it at that.
Great, thanks. Okay, so. So I think we're in a position where we're, you know, I hear everybody on resilience, and what I promised everybody is that we would take one last run at resilience in our next workshop and decide. So we can, we can work on the definition based on some of the contributions that were made, and then we can decide in our next one whether or not it's, we'll keep it through the public consultations, or if we'll decide to say, still not getting it, so let's just, let's just, let's just remove it. So we'll do that with resilience. I did hear strong support for the changes to the vision with, I believe it was councillor Hayes's concern about replacing ensuring with encouraging. But what we'll do is we'll update the vision statement to add the proposed changes, enhance and encouraging proposed by councillor Jaglitz. The other, I hear councillor Mason on the, on the mission. What I would propose is that we keep it as is right now. What we can do is take a stab at integrating integrity and operational excellence into it without making it too much too, too, too wordy. So we'll bring that back at the next, at the next session. And I take the points on leadership in terms of additional language and having environment as a standalone value as opposed to something that's infused all the way through. What I would think is, you know, on that, we could, we could have some debate on that a little bit later, or bring it back once we have the benefit of public, public input on, on the values. So with that, we'll make those changes. And we'll take another run at resilience and just determine if we keep it or we put it on the cutting room floor at the next, at the next session. And I think in terms of some of the verbiage around the goals, I think, you know, there will no doubt be changes to some of the descriptors or the definitions based on our discussion of specific initiatives that can bring a little bit more clarity to things today.
Councillor Nishikawa has raised her hand.
Okay, perfect. Councillor Nishikawa.
Thank you. I started, I thought about this, because when I read the vision about enhance and encouraging, it seemed a little bit muddled to me, and then I looked and I thought about, are we just wanting to enhance quality of life for people? And maybe some of these other words can go away. I think that is our ultimate goal, is to enhance their quality of life while they're in Muskogalakes.
Thank you. Okay. Any last comments before we move on to the initiatives? Okay, so while we move, we're going to spend the bulk of our time today then on the initiatives. And so what we're looking for are specific our specific initiatives that we can undertake to deliver against the goals. Now, when I, when I say specific, you know, I want them to be tangible enough that the direction is clear, but we don't have to figure out the who, what, why, where, when, and how at this point. That's for, you know, implementation planning. That will be a recurring exercise under the guidance of the strategy. Once it's finalized, the council working with staff to breathe life into, you know, the five Ws and the how of the initiatives. But what we want to do is get to, directionally, what actions do we believe we need to take to fulfill the goals that we've, we're setting out for ourselves as a municipality. And so what I would, what I would propose to do is kind of go through these one by one, and we'll take, we'll take the list of initiatives, and we'll ask some follow-up questions. I am confident that based on how our conversations have gone thus far, some key themes or ideas will emerge, which will make it easier to get it down to a manageable number. What, what I'm going to propose is that we start with the first goal here. Preserve and protect the natural and cultural environment. And Mayor Harding, I'm going to ask for your perspective on what you see as tangible initiatives under this goal to advance it.
Well, I think number one is that from a tactic perspective, if you will, if we're looking at tactics, I really think we have to put in place our Septic Inspection Program. That I've been discussing, I know our staff are trying to bring that back, trying to fit it in their work schedule. But that definitely has to happen. And I think we can probably do a better job of. One of these word mapping and identifying heritage features, natural and cultural heritage features that we want to protect.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else, Your Worship?
I'll leave it at that right now.
Okay. Councillor Nishikawa.
Thank you. I think at this moment, just because it, again, happened last evening and the disruption in my household, I would like to see the township of Muskogalakes be leaders in banning fireworks with the exception of one day a year. And this is to protect our environment. All, and you know, others had mentioned that animals are part of our environment, too. I think by having fireworks, you know, seven days a week for months at a time, we are totally disrespecting our, the community of the natural environment.
Okay.
I would also like to suggest that somewhere, and I'm not sure where this is, but in looking at our basic services that taxpayers expect from us, that they would be at their top level, that we would actually find a way to be focused during budget, for instance, and and to provide the best. And we can be better than any other, you know, if somebody happens to drive in from another township and said, well, Muskogalakes has got nice roads, that's okay. I'd like that, because we don't offer a whole lot more. So I don't know where that goes, but certainly I think that's an important issue.
Yeah, and I think that one belongs under the third goal, and I see Lexi putting it in, under the high-quality public services there.
Were you looking for us to just do under the preserve section right now?
Ideally, but if you have others, we can take those down now. That's not a problem.
Well, again, it's also having an understanding of future initiatives under for, to deal with climate change.
And do you have a sense of what the nature of those initiatives need to be, or just that we need to be?
I think we need to be educated. Like, I know that there's, there is an upcoming course, for instance, that some of us might try to engage in, to learn that, and what's coming forward.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Councillor Hayes.
All right. I think we have to have an understanding of the vast area that we cover, and that most of the, of our environment goes beyond the physical boundaries of our township. So we have to be able to work collaboratively with the areas around us. Touching on something that Mayor Harding said about heritage, we should encourage groups to document our history. We have a lot of unique areas where actual history builds on what we are today. And we kind of have to know who we are and where we came from, to know what we want to be when we grow up. And I agree with councillor Nishikawa, we have to recognize that climate change is coming, and perhaps we should change the resilience to adaptability, because we are facing a lot of changes, and we're going to be expected to react quickly to those changes and provide our taxpayers with some kind of stability.
Instability in terms of the adaptability of the natural environment, the physical infrastructure, the services that you deliver, is that kind of how you want to have a climate frame and lens on those things?
Yes, so that when something floods, and know that we have a very adept group of individuals that will respond quickly to it and bring some kind of stability and to what's happening, even though what's happening is beyond our control, we can at least give them advice and areas to react to.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm going to turn the meeting over to you at this point, if that's okay. I need to do a couple of things before this meeting, so I'll be back, folks. I may leave, just turn my video off, so I won't log out, but I'll still be around. Actually, I'm going to have to log out. I'll come back in. Goodbye.
Councillor Zavits.
Well, thank you. And to you, Chris, prior to my commentary, perhaps it's just me, I was more general, and I certainly appreciate councillors Nishikawa and Hayes, you know, drilling right down, yeah, fireworks, I mean, there's so many things, heritage, of course. I mean, it's a large basket of, what would I say, what would I call them, requirements? That I think we all feel duty-bound to either perform or provide. Either perform or provide or and or create, I suppose. So why, I went a little higher level, a little more overarching, if you will. This is this, I guess my question before I sped off on this, is this the time when we. Like, we're going to live and die by the goals that we set? Or is the goal is going to be one, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, two, A, B, C, because, you know, I mean. Wow, I wouldn't know what to begin and end with. I thought the goal would be an overarching sort of umbrella and then we, you know. As we get into these, if you will, these initiatives. My gosh, how many are there going to be? Seventy-two?
No, yeah.
So I made a little guidance from you on that.
Yeah, so, so the goals are overarching, consider them umbrellas. What we're looking for, if you're home, talking about rule of three last week, ideally three to four key initiatives. And those are at the strategic level, so they set, they, you know, with the goal, they set the direction of areas that we want to focus in underneath that goal. So as I'm taking notes, I am going through and I'll just confess, I'm putting. An S next to it if I, I think it's at that strategic level and then T if it's at a very tactical level, it's like a very specific thing. It's for the, you know, the budgeting and the operational planning to kind of fill out some of those tactical things to deliver the initiative. So counselor, I would say you're operating at the right level.
Okay, good, because I would reflect back to what the mayor said about septic. And what Counselor Nishikawa said about fireworks, I mean, these are, we, as counselors can enact bylaws. To firm up a lot of those things and ensure that they get done. And that's why I, so I'm going to look silly here, not, I haven't actually said we should stop fireworks to help to save our wildlife, but. I've gone in another direction, which is again, rather overarching. My first point was communications, will always be communications, you know, sign, agent, social media, you know, what is our message? The message about preserving and protecting our natural and culture, it starts right there. We have people that are, are not listening, we have people that are not responding, we have people that. Are not doing the things that we, you're practicing respect, the code of conduct, they're just not doing a lot of these things. And I think these more constant reminders, call it marketing, call it what you will, you know, reach and frequency will eventually. You know, will break through and people will start to take their garbage and put it in their car instead of throwing it out of their car, et cetera. So I would certainly say communications to me, near and dear to my heart, I think we need to market and promote our trails, our water. Our recreation, both on the use perspective and on the conservation side of it. So again, there's a preserve and protect piece. We want people to come, we want people that are here, who have come to utilize, to use, to enjoy, to realize how beautiful. And wonderful this, this place is as we've spent all this time creating, crafting these words around that. And then the third thing that I would suggest, and number one is. Bylaws on development, I mean, it's a cautionary tale, whether it's, you know, and it is bylaws on development, the more we develop the lakes. The more we, the more people are here, the more natural vegetation and naturalness of our place. That we destroy by putting homes instead of trees. I think we need to be sensitive to that, and so I haven't heard that one yet, but. I think bylaws generally a more fulsome approach to, you know, the environment and the development. Of the environment so that we retain. The good nature of this place. So those are my three. Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Edwards.
Yes. I agree with banning the fireworks, maybe two days a year, Victoria Day weekend and, and July the first, but other than that, I would. Say they should be banned. I would also like this to enforce and that our bylaws and no roadside. Signs and that advertising on our roads, it's, it's a shame when you're driving along a beautiful country road and all of a sudden you see a. A big roadside sign advertising a real estate or something like that, and that I think I would get, get rid of them. And one of the other things is. Enforce in that our living bylaws and that it's a shame. When you walk along and see all the beer cans and everything else like that, the side of road and garbage. And that I don't know how we do that, but I think that, you know, we've got to educate people.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Mason.
Thank you, and to you. I agree with the septic inspection program, I might even call it just a septic program because I believe. That there might be other initiatives that could be looked at. Within, within the whole program, so I wouldn't take inspection out necessarily. I would say it could, it might include more than just inspection. So, i.e. for example, I believe that there's some like GPS mapping tools that we could look into. There's things like, if I recall, things in Japanese not weed, but I believe are a problem. That might not be included in the inspection, but might be included in education, it might be included in it. I don't know what it is, but I think it's just a bit more fulsome. I agree with point number two about mapping and identifying, I think that's important. So that we actually know what we are trying to preserve and protect. Fireworks, that's actually an interesting idea. So I need to think about that one. Climate change, sorry, I wanted to, oh, without repeating everything. Larger presence. I will say with the watershed council, I know that there is a, a large comprehensive overview of how we are managing our overall watershed underway. And there's discussion around this integrated watershed management. I think strengthening the relationships with all these key stakeholders. Somehow is really, really important. Because we tend to look at the land use planning and of course, that's very present with us. Because we are going through our official plan process, but there's many other things that are going on. That impact our, and our things, so even from an educational standpoint. I think it's important and I think Counselor Zavitz touched upon the importance of communication and I strongly advocate that. For the ability for us to inform and educate our constituents. That would be great. Enforcement, I believe Counselor Edwards brought up that, I feel very strongly about that too, we need to invest in the stronger bylaws. Educational tools and enforcement.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. We, point number one, under septic reinspection, we already have a septic reinspection program. What we have is we hire university students, that discipline is not, you know, septics. There may be a finance or whatever, who give them a bit of training and they go out and lift the lids of septic systems and. Based on their checklist, determine whether it's okay. What I think we talked, I know we talked about enhancing septic management. Not putting in, and so improving what we have. Septic management, I think the one thing we talked about for sure. Was that we would. Have a certificate program put in place. Where we would, each septic system would have to receive sort of recertification of their system. Every so many years, and if they, if they did not. Then the township would do it and, and charge them or somehow penalize them, so it's, so it's really. The emphasis there is enhance septic management. The point that I want to bring up, though, is. As it pertains to the environment and at a high level. And without good sustainable water quality. We can boil everything down into water quality, there will be no natural environment or, or environment. To preserve and protect. Without water quality, we have nothing. We, we don't have any economy, we don't have anything, we need to get serious about the environment. We need to do more than just the phosphorus causation study that the district is, is working on. The township Muskogee Lakes must do much more, they must. Support and facilitate further studies in other areas and more than just studying. They must implement mitigating actions. So under initiatives, we need to come up with the initiatives that, that can facilitate water quality improvement. And we got to put teeth into our bylaws. We have so many cases, so, so, so many cases where we're told, where someone violates the environment. Violates our bylaw and just says, who do I write the check to? So we got to stop that, or we got to give them a penalty that hurts. Or, or not hurts, curtails their bad behavior.
It's enough of incentive to change behavior, yes.
Yes.
Excellent, thanks, Counselor Roberts. Counselor Jaglitz.
Thank you. I'm going to reserve ninety percent of my time for goal number three, which is the one I'm going to spend the most time on. I have no comment on goal number two, when you come to me, you can pass me by. Goal number one, I have one comment. And it's, maybe I have to lead into it. How do we discourage, rather than encourage, high density. Residential development on the waterfront? And my, my way of doing that, and this is what I'm suggesting, is to develop a strategy. To make our LPAT outcomes more successful. What I'm referring to, so basically. If you're typing there, it's really very simple, develop a strategy to make our LPAD outcomes more successful. So that when we say that we don't like this type of behavior, this type of development. And we vote against it, that we then have something in place that we can back it up. When we get to LPAT or the court, and I think that's important, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Bridgman.
Thank you. So actually, Counselor Jaglitz just gave me the intro for, we're talking about the environment and protecting the environment. I think one of our goals is to get our OP through. Before the end of our term, and I know we all think that anyway, and maybe it doesn't belong here, but it's all about the environment, it would strengthen things. So that's, that's my thought on that, it puts it on paper that that's what we would like. The septic was also, my concern was that and the rentals and the overuse of them, so I support the septic program. Certainly clean water would fall into that, the bylaws was on my list. One of the things about being near the bottom is, most people have covered things, but the other thought I had.
Or you'll get to go early in the next round, counsel.
I don't know, no, that's okay. In terms of the cultural part. I will throw this onto the list and see what everybody thinks. I think it would be pretty wonderful if we had an initiative. That took the main streets of Bella and Port Carling and quote beautified them with a theme of. Our natural environment to reinforce that to everybody that's here, something along that line so that it's. Everybody who goes there understands that that is what we are about and that's a huge factor for us. So that's my other thought.
Beautify to, to bring attention to or.
Yes, actually, the marketing comes into that from Counselor Jaglitz. Counselor Zavitz, but I think if we had two dynamic downtown areas that highlighted that theme, it would be awesome, actually. So that's my thought.
Excellent. That's great. Be ready, we're coming back to you very shortly. And then Counselor Kelly.
Okay, thank you. I have three initiatives under this first goal. Two of them have pretty much already been covered, but I have a slightly different twist on them. Number one. Official plan review absolutely needs to be done, it needs to be complete, it needs to be specific, and most importantly, it needs to be actionable. We have to identify and call out exactly what it is that we want. Not necessarily want done, but how we want things done. And we have to be bold enough to go out and enforce it when we sense. Somebody is running afoul. Number two. What was my other issue before I get, oh yeah, enforceability or enforcement, one of the things that's frustrating is we have. All sorts of wonderful bylaws and quite honestly. We have a relatively limited capacity and I think a limited interest in enforcing any of them. And this is less to do with. You know, a hard initiative and more to do with a change of attitude, we need to be aggressive, we need to be almost predatory. In patrolling rather than responding to. You know, bylaw breaches, we need to invest in the enforcement of the breaches and I think as. Somebody said earlier, maybe it was Counselor Roberts said earlier, we need to make sure that the, that the. Pain that's inflicted by an enforcement action is strong enough to get the desired response. And the third, the third one is a little more, a little more esoteric, you know, every time we do a planning committee meeting or any kind of. Planning amendment, zoning amendment request, we have to stop at the end of each decision and say, what influenced us? How, you know, what was it outside involvement, what helped us form the decision here? I think we have to install a similar discipline around. Environmental considerations, anytime we take an action, we vote on a bylaw when we vote and pass a resolution. I don't think it would take thirty seconds to stop us and say, okay, did, did we give the environment its due consideration here? Maybe it's a question you ask before you put your hand up rather than after.
Yeah.
Just to make sure we actually stop and think. About the environment. Before we make every decision, we tend to, we tend to take a lot for granted, we tend to make a lot of assumptions. And I think it would not hurt any of us to be asked to stop for a fleeting moment and think before we raise our hand. Have we given due consideration to the environment? That's it.
No, that's great, that's excellent, thank you, Counselor Kelly, thank you all counselors, th- these are excellent ideas. And, and they're, they're operating at the strategic level, so we have a full enumeration of the ideas that Lexi's taken, but I, I wanted. I can distill it in my mind, and it's not wordsmith, but I think it captures broadly. Where I think there is certainly consensus amongst you at the, at the moment.
And I. Couple of hands raised as well.
Okay, sorry, Lexi, I can't see those, so why don't we.
We've got Counselor Hayes and Counselor Jaglitz as well.
Okay, sorry about that, counselors, Counselor Hayes.
Yes, Counselor Nishikawa mentioned the small bang, let's put the big bang on the table and put down blasting. As something that we want to address.
And who was the second, Counselor Jaglitz?
Thank you, I just wanted to correct one thing on point number twelve. Rather than encourage high density residential development, not high quality. Everybody loves.
Wait, quality is a good thing.
High density residential.
Sorry, that was my fault.
No, it was not, it was probably my, my lack of the English language or enunciation or something.
Still on my first cup of coffee, so typing. My brain. Doesn't align with my fingers here.
So, all this will be reflected back in the next meeting, but I, here, I'm coming away with. And it's many, but I think there's some consolidation that will probably happen at our next meeting or, and as we kind of take this away and think it through as well to, to feed it back to you. But I have seven initiatives here, and so I'm, I'm just going to share it with folks. And please raise your hand if you have concerns about something that's not. Not, not fit in, but is, has been raised. The, the mapping, the natural and cultural heritage features to be protected and promoted is one. On climate adaptability, I think there is, we want to be. Proactive in ensuring our climate adaptability as a community, but that also means working with neighbors. You know, in, in, in preparing our natural environment with a climate response. The third one is communicating, marketing and promoting the, the natural environment, both the use and the preservation, including. Dynamic downtowns that highlight and protect the. That highlights the, these, these elements and also I think we can fuse in the greater bylaw enforcement as part of that, right? The fourth is enhancing the septic management. Um, the fourth is enha- enhancing the septic management. Um, uh, a- a- and not just the, the, the program, but the education around the program, the communications around the program. Um, the fifth is water quality management uh, and working with key stakeholders on watershed uh, management. And Counselor, I take your point. It's not just about water quality management, it's about water quality improvement as well. The sixth one that I have is about an actionable or achievable uh, renewed uh, official plan and uh, a strategy to enhance your LPAT outcomes. Um, a- and part of me says maybe the LPAT outcomes is the performance measure, but uh, I have it as part of the initiative statement right now. And then the, the last one, um, a- and I don't know quite where to put blasting and just yet, but the, the last one is one that Counselor Kelly raised, which is, you know, how, what do we mean about, or how would we define, or uh, what discipline are we gonna put around having the environment as a decision-making frame for the decisions that we take as council? So, those are kind of the seven that there seems to be consensus. Uh, people have raised it in various forms in their comments. Um, a- any concern with that, either in terms of um, something missing, or you're really wanting to underscore or uh, underline uh, one of these ideas? Lex, I can't see hands. I don't, I don't know if we have
Chris, I, I, it's, it's Ruth Nishikawa. I had my hand up for a while, so I'm just gonna jump in.
Please, sorry about that.
No, no, it's just the way we are. Um. I'm not sure where this, it, 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 it seems to me it's missing somewhere. Basically, to, to discuss the um, the volunteer opportunities. Uh, I'm, I'm of a vision, or I'm a version of a community that was built by volunteers. And I, I don't want to lose that in our township. So, if there, we can develop a volunteer opportunities, and I, I'd even take it a little bit further that would include um, some of the uh, the, the, the groups that are perceived to be challenged right now, like, for instance, women. Um, youth, disabilities. Newcomers to the, to the area, uh, newcomers to the country. But some point is, is really trying to get an idea that the people are the, are, are incredibly important to our township to keep functioning, not just by get collecting taxes.
Yeah, that, that's an excellent point, uh, Counselor, and, and um, leave it with us to figure out where it falls, and it might be, it mi- it might be something that straddles all three goal areas, to be per- perfectly honest. That's an excellent
And we've got our Counselors Zavits and Counselor Mazan as well, who have hands up.
Thank you. Uh, I'll just proceed here. Uh, the first point on the goal, the first word preserve. Um, if we just stay there for a moment, I mean, these seventeen are great, and I, I think they're in our basket of our tool basket, our tricks that we can do, but when I, as a counselor, go to the uh, Township of Muskoka Lakes Workbook for a new counselor, which there isn't, I'm being facetious, uh. You know, w- we do not protect, sorry, uh, we do not preserve and protect our taxpaying. We are, you know, this whole talk about bylaw, we need to reinforce, we need to enforce our bylaws. We need better, I suppose nobody's used the word policing, but you know, there's an urbanization piece to Muskoka that's happening, whether we like it or not. Um, there are more people here, we're shoulder to shoulder, we're expected to live and work and love together, and you know, I, I see signs of disrespect every day. I'm not seeing, you know, I, I, I think it's, we need to be deadly serious. My next two, two years as in term will certainly focus on this. We need to be deadly serious about preserving this place. Uh, for all the reasons that Counselor Roberts has said about the water. Me, to me, this all is a, is a pot for making a stew here. Uh, it's, and it's gonna be tasty at the end, or everybody's gonna run the other way. And I don't see the words in here that are really strong words that say we are going to enact uh, measures to preserve this place. And that's just a, I guess a thought as we move on on this.
Excellent. We'll take that into consideration as we're working this up for you. And who was the next Counselor, uh, Lexi? Sorry.
Counselor Mazan.
Counselor Mazan?
Yeah, thank you. And through you, uh, just a small thing, as I'm looking at number four regarding climate change. Um, and I'm thinking back to our discussion around that word resilience.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how these two things tie in or, or the exact words on this, but I do believe that this is the one that is easiest to describe resilience and our need to ensure that we have resilient organizational structures. Our community is resilient as we face, um, you know, the things that climate change are bringing to our doorstep. So, uh, I just wanted to tie those two things in, and uh, I'm sure it applies elsewhere as well.
Yeah, and I think it applies particularly in three as well, Counselor. I think that's a, an excellent contribution. Thank you. A- any other hands up, Lex?
I'm not right now.
Okay. So this is great. There's a lot to work with, and, and we'll distill it down for, for folks and, and, and bring it back, but there's a lot of great ideas, and I, I think a lot of complementarity to what, uh, what everyone has has, uh, has provided. So, uh, Lex, let's go to the next goal, which is uh, about strengthening and diversifying Muskoka Lakes's uh, economy. Similar exercise uh, here, um, and I'm gonna begin with Counselor Kelly on this.
Okay, uh, just a few thoughts. Uh, I'm a big believer that, uh, and I think it's a bit trite, but I'll say it anyhow, business goes where it's invited and stays where it's made welcome. And I don't think we've ever particularly made any effort to invite a business to come here, and I, I think even making them feel welcome is a bit of a struggle for us. So, I think we need to sit back and realize the need. I don't think we even necessarily understand or, or maybe agree that there is a need for some proactive economic development, some diversification in the local economy. Um, I believe that there is, and I believe there's a lot that can be done without offending any of the kind of principle codes about environment first. We need to be selective about what gets done here and where it gets done. Um, I think we need to take stock of our kind of infrastructure and make sure we've got an appropriate uh, uh, system of uh, uh, wifi accessibility, roads, uh, and lands to be developed for light industrial or commercial activity. Um, I think we need to be uh, unafraid to call out the township as a, as a location for business relocation or business startup. And then I think we just need to get out in people's face and make people put the township of Muskoka Lakes on the list. If they're expanding a business, opening a new branch, starting a business, uh, and they're looking for a place to come, uh, we need to be proud enough in the township and confident enough in our ability to support them to, to, to compete for that opportunity.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Bridgman?
Hey, thank you. Um, Counselor Kelly and I are probably along the same lines of thinking in this, but my first one was broadband. Because until we have that, it is very hard to get any businesses up here. And so, um, I think we need to strategically support and, and push forward on, on broadband. Um, also, I was, I, I was thinking that we need some areas for industrial expansion for office-type uh, uh, businesses, not, not just manufacturing, et cetera. I think we need to identify those areas, and perhaps we need to ensure they get broadband. And as a, as an initiative for this term, for the next five years, I would really like to see us support agri tourism to help diversify the economy, because I think that's an opportunity we have now with our farmlands and uh, off, off-the-water um, uh, businesses and, and residents. So those are my three that I came up with.
That's excellent. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Jaglitz?
Uh, thank you. Uh, as I indicated earlier, I have really nothing to offer on this goal and would reserve my time for goal number three. But just then, as an aside, you know, I don't know if you're all aware, but um, Christina Freeland has uh, been tasked to replace Morno as our Finance Minister. Thank you.
He is uh, this generation's John Manley, Minister of Everything. Um, Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, thank you. Um, this is gonna be a real hard nut to crack. And I've been thinking about it ever since I threw my hat in to, to run for council. Um, I, I fully support what um, Counselor Kelly and Counselor Bridgman have said. We've got to encourage um, businesses to come. And, and if we build the infrastructure and make it attractive, they will come. So there's really nothing there to add, and other than, I'm supported. We know the population or the forecast is, are that the Township Muskoka uh, population is going to decrease. We know that our number one work item is tourism, but we also know that tourism is not our number one economic driver. Tourism is becoming more of a bedroom community type of tourism. Um, so, uh, the, the we, we, our number one economic driver has been identified as development.
Well.
That's what, that's where uh, it, it, number one, hands down. Everything else is seasonal. We have a very small population. We need to en- ensure that small population thrives. But we can't even accra- do, do attainable st- um, housing, because our jobs are there, the majority of the jobs we offer are very low-income jobs, and it's seasonable work. So, in that, I, I don't know what the suggestion is. It's, um, we, you know, we're, we're saying number one driver is development, but many of us um, including myself, feel that development, redevelopment is significantly um, in some cases impacting our environment. So, this is gonna be, um, I think, uh, I, I really like what was said, you know, build it and they will come, and we've got to start really putting initiatives in place that encourage people to come in. And I think I said during my campaign, if small chat, if small-town China can do it, what's stopping Muskoka Lakes from doing it?
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mazan?
Well, thank you very much, and uh, I, I guess through, through you. Um, I, I think this is the, what, what you're highlighting there, my, my colleague is highlighting is the inevitable conflict that will come from uh, responsibly having an economic strategy that allows people to flourish here while protecting our environment, and that comes back to making decisions that have the an, an environmental lens and an economic lens. And if we perhaps approach all of our decision-making, saying, is it for example, and then being facetious here, but is it a good idea to have a coal mine here in Muskoka Lakes? Probably not. Right? Like, we should almost have that list of uh, criteria or whatever they may be. Um, I would also like to draw attention to the fact that our economic development team actually has crafted up an economic development strategy, which I do think would be helpful for this section, Chris. And as, as it, the group went through it, they actually approached it with a, an environmental lens. So, uh, they did some preliminary work on it, and I think it would be helpful, whether it's the verbiage or whatever, that these two documents ob- obviously should be connecting.
Yeah.
Um, in it, there, we highlighted three things. There were key economic drivers that were not unique necessarily to the township of the Muskoka Lakes, but they are absolutely critical to uh, the success um, of our communities. One is housing, two was workforce or workforce attraction, and three is broadband. So those are, are we recognize that those are key, and we have to make sure we are working together in order to be working with all different levels of the government and ensuring we are creating the conditions to allow those things to flourish. Uh, I would add in a fourth, which is transportation. Rural communities, that is a, a, a real disadvantage for a lot of people, if you don't have the ability to get to and from. Um, the second portion or pillar of our, we had it in three, so you'll be happy, Chris, was existing business support. And I'm just trying to highlight one of the things that was, I think, really becoming highlighted through COVID times. And it was embedded in it. We have create an asset inventory of the natural and infrastructural assets that identify and identify those will be, need to be maintained and improved over time to help support. They're saying the tourism industry. Um, I would add that I think quality of life is an important thing that we need to be thinking about. Uh, I go back to your document on page thirteen, and you said this is what we said in January, which is attract youth and young skilled workers to the municipality. They need to have jobs, they need to have housing, they need to be able to get around, but I'm going to throw it in here. They need to have things that they're to do. Right? And to do in all four seasons is a really important um, part of the attraction. The third category, we had diversible, div- diversify the local economy. And I think a couple of my colleagues have already talked about the importance of the land and space inventory. So, uh, I do think that that is something that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Edwards?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think what we have to do is, uh, we have to get uh, light industrial areas uh, zoning for that, so, and that. And maybe change some of our regulations. Sometimes we have a hundred-foot setback, so uh, if you're in an industrial area uh, between buildings, that's almost two hundred feet. I, I think we have to look at that. Get areas that aren't um, uh, close to residential and uh, get some industrial, light industrial. I'm not talking about heavy in that. Um, and of course, we do need uh, and that broadband is was, was, was mentioned in that, but uh, this is one of the things, but you know, and we need some some good family restaurants. If you go through, through uh, Port Carling uh, and you're window shopping, uh, you see about ten or fifteen real estate offices. And I, I've talked to, to, to some business when uh, a, a local family restaurant closed, they closed for, for the winter because people will not come in if they can't sit down and have a, a lunch or a dinner. And I'm not talking about just Subway or Tim Hortons. So that, that's what we need, and I don't know how you bring them in. And that, um, we did have one that was uh, just, just and, and that priced over the ordinary's uh, in their personal budget, so they don't come.
Yeah.
And that, but uh, it's something that uh, to, that we have to, to work on. Thank you. I'll, I'll mute it, even though the mayor asked me to leave it on.
Okay, excellent. Uh, Counselors Zavits?
Thank you. Uh, interesting, my uh, good friend, uh, Chair Kelly of the Economic Development Committee, uh, you know, I, my words are create a business environment, uh, where business feels welcome, and we did not cheat. We did not get together last night. So, you know, I, I think it's amazing that we uh, we agree on, on, on that, and I think that again, we can move into how we, we can do, deal with some of those things. Uh, we need more months, uh, you know, we need longer seasons. Uh, that's a, that's a definite, and you, we've been hearing uh, that reinforced today. Uh, we need to attract workers with affordable housing. You know, I, I look back to our homework, uh, we talked about uh, initiatives still relevant, given the discussion during last week's session two, which were, uh, three of them, grow the small business economy, diversify the township's revenue base, provide more offerings for the community, attract youth and young skilled workers uh, to the municipality and achieve better connectivity. So, again, I think there's a lot of reinforcement of, of some base ideas here that uh, are just absolute requisites, right?
Yeah.
To that, I thank you.
Excellent. Uh, Counselor Hayes?
Okay, through you. Um, I have down, uh, enable and promote diverse housing development opportunities. Sustainable growth to include homes, employment businesses and light industries, and enhanced services to include broadband, shopping opportunities, dental and medical services, uh, utilizing the community centers as community hubs, providing um, theater and um, I think that was it.
Can you just repeat some of those amenities you spoke about? So you had dental, community hubs.
Uh, broadband, shopping, dental services, medical services, and utilizing our community centers uh, to provide community hubs with um, groups and theater.
Okay, excellent. Counselor Nishikawa? You may be on mute, Counselor. Lex, can we see Counselor Nishikawa?
She's here, but I can't see her picture.
She's unmuted, so there may just be a connectivity issue.
Okay. And Mayor Harding is still away, correct?
Can I just ask, Counselor Hayes, I got your first point and your third point. What was your second, your second point? Just so I can have it before I go on the screen.
Sustainable growth that includes homes, employment businesses and light industry.
Thank you.
Okay. So these are excellent. So here's, here's where I think, you know, there's three or four kind of key ideas here, and we'll get the wording right because all the wording is on the page. But there's the actual execution of the economic development strategy and the elements that are inherent in it around housing, workforce development, broadband, transportation, business supports. I think there is a piece around further definition around criteria you'll use or, you know, areas you'll prioritize for economic growth. And we heard a lot about kind of light, light industrial and commercial. Year, the third thing is, you know, you know, through economic development activities stimulating businesses that provide year round amenities and activities for, for residents. And, you know, the, you know, the idea of creating community hubs to engage groups, community groups and theater groups as a way of creating greater cultural attraction and interest is probably something that is, is important to have down. I guess my, my question is whether or not, you know, we've heard a lot about housing affordability and to Counselor Hayes's point about enabling and promoting diverse housing opportunities, whether or not we want to just amplify that as a standalone initiative or are we satisfied that it's contemplated in the economic development strategy? Any comments on that? Do we have any hands up, Lex?
No, we don't have any hands up right now.
So I think those are the four, four main buckets and we'll work to take the 14 ideas here and craft them. But I, again, I think there is a broad consensus around what you need to do from an economic development perspective. There's probably more work you need to do in terms of prioritizing what type of economic development you want to, you want to see happen, and that will enable that 365 economy.
Counselor Roberts has raised his hand.
Counselor Roberts?
Thank you. I just wanted to state that we have tasked the Economic Development Committee to work on, on what we can do to strengthen our economy. And we've been working months on this. And so these are all good points that we have there. But I think we, that I suggested the consultant can get a hold of what the, this group has written and as, as the best way to move forward and sort of use it as a guiding factor. Because we did task these people to do this.
Yeah, excellent. No, understood, understood. Okay. Shall we move on to goal number three? Which is around enhancing and sustaining public services in infrastructure. Can I start with Counselor Nishikawa on this one? And Counselor, you did have a point on this earlier, which we, I think noted. Anything else to, to add to this initiatives under this goal?
Thank you. I'm just trying to see where it, come up with something else that hasn't been noted. Again, taking stock of what we own, of what we actually have, and then developing additional services around those things, whether it be a new affordable housing building or a new trail system. And I didn't, I didn't see that it was, I've been saying this for years, that we, we are, we generally are bringing in thousands of people a week through our trail system. And, and that's it. We don't do anything more to leverage that. You got them here, but what do we do now? Sort of thing. And so what, however that comes to be, I think it's a, something that we've been missing for some time that would in fact help many of our businesses, actually, if they were just to have a portion of those people that, that are coming in to use our parks and trails system. If those, a portion of those people actually visited our shops and things, that would be fantastic.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Counselor Hayes?
Okay, I have provide clear, concise, enforceable policies, procedures and bylaws to allow all residents, cottagers and visitors, visitors a perfect Muskoka Lakes experience. And also a stable, fiscally responsible infrastructure plan. And use the community centers as opportunities for social engagement. And just to add to Counselor Nishikawa's idea about our trails, if we were to have on the boards that are there other trails, and by the way, when you're on your way to the other trail, here's places where you can stop and shop or stop and dine and utilize our facilities that we have to improve the direction of the flow of people.
Okay, great, thank you. And Counselor, can I just ask you to repeat the first point?
Oh, provide clear, concise and enforceable policies, procedures and bylaws to allow all residents, cottagers and visitors a perfect Muskoka Lakes experience.
Great, thank you. Lexi, Lexi's mind works faster than mine. She captured it pretty well. Counselor Zabitz?
Oh, thank you very much. And certainly to the two Ward A counselors, Nishikawa and, and Hayes. Yeah, the trails. I mean, that's a big part of Ward A over here at Torrance Clear Lake, Ballot Way. There's, it could be a lot of things that we could do. I don't, you know, we could establish a budget for the Parks and Trails committee that might be $25,000 per annum instead of making them beg and, and come to up with ideas. We don't do, again, where we don't do a good job is, is acknowledging that the trails do bring in those, to Ruth's comment, thousands of visitors who then could potentially go to stores and restaurants. You, there are many things we could do within the Parks and Trails piece to enhance that, to, to create an environment where we would market it, we would be proud of it. I know we are all, they're gorgeous, but they, they could use an upgrade and enhancement. There's no question about that. And it's nothing to do with our Parks and Trails Committee. I think it's the mental, it's the way the township approaches it that I think could be, could be enhanced. I, my number one idea here for enhanced and sustained public services and infrastructure is upgrade our TML road quality. You know, here's where all of a sudden I get specific when everybody else is overarching. Our roads suck. They absolutely do. And they, they suck all over this township and I'm going to be on the record for that. And shame, shame on me if I get the big heck for that. But I can't help but notice them throughout the township. We need, we need more, more focus on that, like we do on our trails. We need more, more focus. I think number two point, we should be adding some, we should add social programs that indicate, you know, facility usage, community centers, arenas, parks. We, again, social programs, we're not, we're not big and strong on that one at all. And number three, just that whole so, social infrastructure piece, you know, more events, creation of events to attend and support. We seem to love the private enterprise, the entrepreneurs of the world. Create, you know, create events and opportunities to come into Muskoka, into our township. Perhaps the township of Muskoka Lakes should be doing more on their own, again, overarching to attract and invite people here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you. Our community centers are underused and that, I think we've got to get some youth programs in them. And that, when you look at our volunteers, they're all aging and that there's no, no young people coming up to, to take over in a lot of these centers. There are some, but there's not enough. I think we should be supporting our, our groups like the Lions, the Women's Institute and everything else of that. We seem to charge them so much for rentals and that. These are taxpayers are already paid their taxes to open that hall. So they, they should be encouraged to use them at, at no fees.
Excellent. Counselor Mezzin?
Thank you. And through you. I think that Counselor Hayes, sorry, I keep saying through you. I guess this is not what I need to say, but it's a long day. The, now I've lost my train of thought. Shoot, Counselor Hayes brought up some really great points, so I don't want to repeat those, other than I think she embedded in something, strong fiscal responsibility. Somehow she, she said something about that. So I, I think that's important. I do like this theme that I'm hearing about understanding our natural assets and leveraging or promoting those more. Counsel Bridgman brought this up under economic development about agritourism. I think there is a move afoot. I believe the province is really supporting these types of initiatives. And I think it gets us away from always focusing on the lakes as our only center for recreation and understand how that can play into a healthy and viable and resilient and sustainable Muskoka Lakes. And speaking from somebody on Ward B, there, you know, there's this beautiful landscape that I think we can look at. So I heard, I think Counselors Abbott say, we have existing trails, but there is the possibility for new trails. And not to say we need to foot the bill, but that comes back to the point about working with relationships with other government partners to understand how to go about doing that type of thing. So I think that's important.
Does the town have a trail strategy? Do you have a trail strategy?
Well, I, well, I don't think I'm the person to answer that question. Maybe that's what I'm asking for. That's, I think that would be helpful and embedded in that would be something that I would, I would love to see that. Not just the strategy, but I would love to see a way, because I will bring up, Counselor Edwards just brought this up, that we have an aging population and, and we do want to look to try and engage youth. Well, I'm going to bring us back to the conversation that we just had about workforce attraction. I think we need to have jobs here. We need to be able to, to have houses for people to stand and we need to have things for people to do. And I think it's really important that we are understanding what this next generation, what types of things they do like to do. We're going to bring our lens to this conversation, of course, but it's important. I continue to focus on let's understand our natural assets. Let's understand how to get people outside, be healthy and active, largely because that's what I see. And maybe that's the cohort that I'm involved with, but I think it's just a really important and underlooked and underutilized part of what we have here as our whole brand. So that was my addition to some already amazing thoughts by my peers. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Roberts?
Great lead in. I'm actually with my esteemed colleague Ruth Nishikawa on the Parks and Trails Committee. And this Thursday, we have a watershed, what I refer to as a watershed meeting where we're, we're looking to resolve a lot of things. We have it that came to council last, last second, last week, presented by Director Ken Becking, Public Works, the idea of a strategic plan. We're going to learn, we're going to evolve that idea much more at this Wednesday's or this, this week's meeting.
That's great.
We also have a, working on a memorandum of, of understanding with the, with the Ontario Government on two of the parks that we partner with. And we're working on and our staff are going to be soon working on, we'll get more details on shortly, on a park plan, park and trail. So stay tuned for those that are not on the committee. I think we should be giving updates at the next council meeting on exactly how we're moving on. And finally, in that area is that we are, we're looking at the low hanging fruit that, that the work that we can do right away to help our parks and trails. And most of our issues I see are, are maintenance that the public have. And our mandate is to improve and add more trails. And we will get to that. Probably not this, not this year, but next year. The, for the, just on the community centers, I, the communities are our focus or our hubs. And we need to have a marketing plan. I talked to the, I know I talked a couple of years ago to the Director of Public Works to talk about a marketing plan. We got great assets that need to be broadcast throughout the township Muskoka Lakes of what we offer. We need to enhance some of the facilities so we can get more people coming into them. We need, so and I put my points now here, those ones that I thought about is that when I read the, the goal, there's two pieces that sort of highlight the whole answers. Continuous internal improvement. And the second part, strong relationship with other government partners. I'll just speak to the first one, continuous internal improvement. As the Board of Directors, we refer to the CIO and look to him to, to really, and he has been doing this, to do continuous internal improvement. Maybe we should have just a little forum or initiative that counselors sit and bring the public input to where we need to, what we need to improve. Because there are some ideas. That would be the initiative. Counsel share what they hear from the public, how we can improve our services. And strong relationships with other governments and partners. We sort of are getting together with other municipalities and other governments. And from what I viewed, we've seemed to be at a stalemate. And I look forward to my Counselor Jagowitz's input on his suggestions on how we can improve our partnership with the other governments. And then I might come back and say something after Counselor Jagowitz speaks.
Great, thank you. That's a segue to Counsel Jagowitz.
Wow, what an introduction. Thank you. Just in aside, I, I'm sure you're all aware that Samantha Hastings has been appointed the interim CIO of the district. I hope you'll, you'll give me some, Mr. Chair, some latitude on this because I did not speak on the last subject. This is a very important subject to me and I believe, and I would ask the person that's typing on the screen to move down and create a new category. And, and I, I obviously don't have the power to do that, but I would ask, and the power be to our relationship with the district. And, and I think this, as I said in earlier meetings, I think this deserves its own goal. But since it's a muddled in with parks and everything else, at least it should have a subtitle to give it some, some importance. I'm having trouble, but I'm just going to go through what I have prepared here. But I think under this category, we should continue to strengthen our senior management team. And, and I don't want that to be interpreted as we don't have a quality senior management team. a quality senior management team. There's been tremendous strides. We have a new C, C A O, we have a new director of finance. We have a new position in development or planning, but we don't have the resources under that person to support that position. And, um, so I'm, I'm just asking that we strengthen the team, we have it at the township here, so we can better chart our own way. The second thing that I'm suggesting is that we endeavor to improve our relationship with the district so that we either have more dollars to be used locally or we have more say in district policies. And those are, and those two things go hand in hand. We contribute a lot to the district and we have little say. And, and I don't know how you, you, you work those out. The next thing is, and I know everybody's gonna not like this, but as an alternative, I think, and it maybe should be, uh, what do we call these initiatives? To investigate becoming a single tier municipality. And the reason to do that is so that if we can't improve our relationship with the district, that at least we have some other alternative. And that ties into the concept of relationship with the district and senior levels of government. If that level, we can't seem to work our issues out with, then maybe we have to go higher. So let me say last item, this is, I think this is the bottom line statement. We should strive and, and maybe I'm going to wait till she stops typing because, um, this one maybe is the only one that'll get any traction of all the others. And if you don't mind, it's to strive to have more control over our destiny and to get better value for our taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent, thank you. Uh, councillor Bridgman?
Uh, thank you, Chris. Um, I, I think I took a little bit of a different tact on this than a lot of people. I was looking at us, as in, in more internally. But before I go any farther, I support councillor Jagowitz, uh, in his relationship with the district. I have no opinion for or against at this point. I would like to investigate it, so I understand completely our relationship and how that works dollar wise and everything else. So I, I would, I would, uh, like that as a, as an, uh, initiative for us in, in the near future. So what, uh, what I did was sort of look at it overall and I am suggesting we need, uh, we need to initiate an asset plan, which would be our community centers, which would be our fire halls to, to understand what that is and, uh, what it costs. And then we'll look at our community centers to figure out which ones we can keep or not keep. And that would include the programs that go in them. I, I'm thinking 10 years out to, to, to have more engagement with our community. Uh, but that would include our parks and trails too. I mean, the asset management overall thing, unless we pull them all together under one umbrella, we're doing piecemeal everywhere. So the initiative I would like to see is an overall look at, at, at all of our assets and how they interact between them and what we can do to offer better services, et cetera. I, I also think we need to internally look at the fact that we, our resources, uh, to provide that exceptional service are being taxed. And because we have more demanding, um, I think society is just more demanding now, and I believe we need to look at our staffing levels for that. That might be a little too, too detailed, but, um, that's one thing that we need to do. And just as another, uh, initiative that I'd really like to see, and maybe it's, maybe it's too specific again, is something even like our building department having online, building permits and doing everything online. Many other municipalities have that. And those, that kind of an initiative, I think would be, uh, terrific. So I, I agree with everything else that's been said, but I just took a little bit of a different slant on it, uh, in terms of infrastructure.
No, I'm, I'm glad, glad you did that, cause that was going to be my, my question, um, back, just in terms of within the four walls of the corporation, uh, what, you know, what is the direction council wants to set? Uh, with respect to its, its people and, and how it actually delivers its services. So that's, that's very helpful. Uh, councillor Kelly?
Okay, thank you. Just so that councillor Jagowitz isn't the only one with current events, uh, our federal government has announced that they're going to prologue parliament until sometime late in October. And it makes me wonder whether we should do the same in prologue, uh, council. At least we wouldn't be in the way of anybody. Seriously, uh, my comment on here, everybody's pretty much hit it all, but I think there's a big attitudinal issue here that we need to, to deal with for a lot of people, including a lot of us, I think. You know, there's something quaint about spending every other Saturday afternoon, wondering when the power is going to come back on. We, we great, give great stories watching the, uh, the, uh, luxury import cars lined up at the community center on a Sunday morning, using the free wifi to download the, uh, download the, uh, their email. And I, and I think we really need to realize that, you know, we've grown up, we've grown past this sort of campfire and, and, uh, historical place where services were minimal, where part of the experience was roughing it. I don't want to obviously sacrifice any of the good things, the, the water, the quality of the environment, the, uh, trees, the rocks. But maybe we do need to recognize that the current demand is for, uh, improved infrastructure, improved service and really focus on it rather than excuse, make excuses for it. So that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, no, that's, that's great. So, um,
Jump in, Chris, I'm back.
Please, yeah, your worship, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I would go also and add to councillor Bridgman's comments. Online, there's a variety of online services that we should be offering that our staff consistently, so permitting is one of them. People call in for property reports, what is my taxes, uh, what did I pay last time? Are there any severances on my property? Our, our planning department has been working to put a click and, um, see everything associated with my property, variances, so on and so forth. We really need to up that online game sooner than later, cause that will deliver far better services. Uh, and I think the other thing, I know it's under Derek's leadership, but I, I don't want to stop here where we've done some departmental operational streamlining, where we've got director Pink now, uh, sort of overseeing building and planning. What other areas are there that we can, um, organizationally improve, uh, work with, um, our public? So, thank you.
Okay, no, that, that's great, your worship and, and welcome back. So, um, so I, 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 I take, uh, the way I would distill what everybody has shared is, and Derek, this may be a question for you, does, but, but does the town have a recreation master plan?
Thank you. No, we don't. It's been something that's been in the budget for some time, the capital budget, uh, but it's been, uh, something that's been deferred. Uh, it's an initiative that, uh, staff are trying to, uh, proceed through the Parks and Trails Committee to, uh, to, to essentially allow that study to proceed. Uh, I, I would note, uh, Chris, that, uh, we do have modernization funds and staff will be coming back to council with a series of, uh, items that could be, those funds could be used to, uh, to initiate studies, et cetera.
That's great. Yeah, because both, both the, like the Parks and Trails strategy, but also the desire on the part of council to increase utilization of community centers and assets through marketing and proactive programming and, you know, refreshing and, you know, refreshing the volunteer base. They, those are all things that would tend to be dealt with under a recreation master plan that you can implement. So you have a clear kind of strata, vision and strategy for how you want your, uh, you, you know, your, your, uh, recreation, um, uh, offering to, to evolve over time. So I think that's one key takeaway. I think the relationship with the district and councillor Jagowitz, I'm, uh, I'm going to pretty much lift everything that you raised and, and, uh, in, in terms of the, um, improving the relationship so that, you know, you're getting, uh, better value, uh, you have, uh, more control of your destiny and getting better value for your local taxpayers, um, and looking at what you can do with the, with the district to improve that relationship and having a reserve investigating, becoming a single tier. Um, the, um, the service delivery, digitization, the accessibility of those services through different channels. I think there is a service delivery kind of modernization or updating, uh, a piece that is part of the initiative here, including how you're going to be able to deploy those modernization funds, both to understand where you have opportunities to, um, further streamline the operation to re, redeploy that, uh, capacity in other areas, but also what you can be doing to, uh, enhance service delivery through the use of online and other channels, uh, as well. And then, uh, I, I, you know, the, the piece on the road network, uh, I heard, uh, whether we want to have that as a standalone initiative, uh, I'm going to keep it as a standalone initiative now, so we'll have the benefit of some review and discussion at our next meeting on that as well. But those are the big ones I'm taking away based on everybody's contribution. Um, any, any, um, concerns with those takeaways?
Chris, if I may, because I've had, I've had, it's Ruth, and I've had my hand up for some time, so I'm not, not trying to be disrespectful. I just don't know that we're actually acknowledging, uh, our hands. I just wanted to add that in, in many of these initiatives and things and, um, our, our, our own municipality, like our, I will say this, the, uh, the policies that we develop put a lot of roadblocks up that do not, they, they, they are not part of sustaining anything. They're not, not part of actually, uh, moving forward with anything. The roadblocks and, and they just keep coming and that really concerns me. I also wanted to just have a, a moment, because we are talking about our parks and, and trails and community centers.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and caution council that the public has been doing a pretty darn good job when we allow them, when we get out of their way to create programming in their community centers that they want. And then, of course, we, we have the district that is also continuing to do programming in our community centers, which, other than the use of the hall, that's a pretty good value, in my opinion, uh, that we should leverage a little more. But also, you know, when we talk about creating, um, a, a master plan for our parks and trails and recreation, let's remember how big we are. Uh, and, you know, bringing in a consultant, with all due respect, bringing in a consultant from outside of the area to discuss what we do with 10 buildings, 10 parks. Like, we don't have a lot of stuff is mostly what I'm saying. And I, and I, I, while we have a large geographic area, we are still a little municipality, a bedroom community, I would say, to the, the other municipalities. And, and that is really in my face so much more than ever. That, and, and, and of course, also because of the other strategic plan that we're, we're doing now for O P and things, and the comments being heard from people and, and actually not wanting, uh, us, I'll just say this, not wanting us to grow. I, I, I just feel, I feel concerned that council wants a whole bunch of things that we just need to really simplify what we have and what we can improve on. So, yeah, I would just say, and remove the roadblocks.
So can I ask you a follow up question on the roadblocks, um, uh, point, uh, councillor? Are, are there some specific examples you can kind of share with us, so we have a better appreciation for the types of things? Uh, that, you know, are, 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 are roadblocks from your perspective?
Oh, well, I, I guess that's where I have too much history. Because it was so much easier to be able to approach staff and to be able to approach, um, uh, council with an idea. Whether, whether it be just a community group that came forward, not through our grant programs, because some of them aren't just about getting money. It's like somebody actually listening to an idea.
Councillor, you've gone on mute by accident.
Sorry, it looked like it said that the host muted me.
That's on me.
Okay, I don't, I don't, I don't know, whatever. My, my point is, and I'm, I would say over the last year of, uh, trying to do a very small initiative, something that we've done time and time before has become a huge obstacle. Roadblock.
Is that just in terms of access to pros, the decision-making process, or are there specific bylaws that have been passed that preclude the activity now?
I, I, I would say that there's a lack of, uh, understanding. While we, it's fantastic that we have all new staff, you have to, in my opinion, embrace what has been done in the past. And again, usually utilizing the, uh, volunteers as well, but embrace what we have done in past and not trying to draft new things that can, of course, put more roadblocks up.
Excellent, thank you.
And we've got some more hands up, Chris. We've got councillor Hayes, councillor Zavitz and councillor Jagowitz as well.
Is it councillor Hayes first, uh, Lexi?
Yes, I think she had her hand up.
Yeah. Yeah. Number, number four, fiscally responsible, that was mine. And I did say fiscally responsible and sustainable infrastructure plan. And I'd also like to agree with councillor Nishikawa being around for a long time and even before sitting on councillor, on council. Some of the history of the way that we do things has been lost and it, it is becoming a different road to get things done. And people don't like change. So it is more difficult to, um, for volunteers to come forward and actually get things done. I know at our community center, we actually had it, it changed from community center to community and recreation center and library because we have enhanced the, um, uh, the recreational capacity of our community center.
Okay, thank you. Who is next, Alex?
Not sure who had their hand up first, but we've got councillor Jagowitz as well.
Councillor Zavitz?
Thank you. I guess, I guess the words might be the challenge of change. Again, being a marketer my whole life, um, I'm not a change merchant, but, uh, we can't be afraid of it. We, uh, we're going to be as large as we want to be or as small as we let ourselves be. And so bit of a visionary statement there, and I'm not trying to rewrite this whole thing, but, you know, I, I, the, the old ways, the new ways. Why can't we just have a way? I mean, the, the, the mindset is to make this place better. Look at our words. And, um, I, you know, I, I'm not going to call, call out new staff, old staff or old precepts, new assumptions. I think we have what we have. We have a great, we have a great township. We have a great company. We just need to, uh, speak up and craft, uh, you know, a better way forward. And again, I know that's mom and pop, but, um, if we don't, we're just going to be mired in mediocrity, you know, messing around with how it used to be versus how it can be. And, uh, let's just make, let's, let's just go forward. So the, the one thing that I think was missed, Chris, here is the idea, the notion that, um, Township of Muskoka Lakes, Gravenhurst Bracebridge, if I might, uh, you know, the Muskoka Triangle or, uh, you know, Township of Muskoka Lakes, Gravenhurst, Bracebridge, if I might, you know, the Muskoka Triangle, or, you know, the Green Triangle, the Green Trail, whatever it is. You know, there are three municipalities. So in Gravenhurst, they have a gorgeous pools. They they are pool. They have, you know, they have state of the art, if you will, infrastructure. We as a township do not. I think that if we could promote more, and I'm not trying to sell out our brand by any means, but if people want to go for a swim in November, you know, head to Gravenhurst and use the Y there, or head to Bracebridge for this. Point being is that if we if we utilize that piece, you know, we're offering more more services, more products, if you will, from our company to our to our user base. Yeah, and I I think we missed that, you know, Waterloo is the golden angle, and it encompasses, you know, a million and a half people, but you know, Waterloo is Waterloo, Kitchener is that, but when they're all together, wow, are they ever powerful? And so I would challenge this group perhaps to embrace that.
That's great. Thanks, Counselors Adams and Counsel Jaguars.
Thank you, Chris. I'll try to be brief. I heard you say it, but it was not highlighted. I'm referring to point number 18. And I think it bears reading out, investigating, investigate becoming a single tier municipality. Should better relations with the district not be achieved? And I applaud whoever changed my words to say that because they're better than I actually spoke. And I know this will be opposed by some, but I think it needs to be somewhere written in our plan so that it's not swept under the carpet. In other words, we need to become better stewards of our own thing, and if it can be worked out with the district, great. But if not, we should go straight to the province. Thank you for that closing comment.
Thank you, Counselor. Lex, are there any more hands up? Because I I know we're bumping up against our allotted time.
No hands right now.
I'll just if I can chime in, Chris, just one question.
Please.
One, I might, I I understand, and I fully support investigating a single tier. The question is, is it a strategic goal and a strategic plan right now, or is it an initiative aside that may become because of the result is we want to become a single tier, that might change significantly our strategic goals for the next four years. The plan potentially could become out of date. So I I just, that's my only question in that because it really is a separate initiative to fully understand, is that really where this municipality want to go?
I'll I'll defer your worship to Counsel Jaguars for clarification on that. The way I the way I understood it, Counsel Jaguars is it's it's a bit it's it's kind of in our strategic reserve. We're not necessarily going to pull it out or even proactively study it right off the top, but if if we can't drive a better relationship with the district, then we will be looking at that possibility.
Well, if I might, Chris. The mayor and I sometimes play two things here. Sometimes we like to be the last to speak. And this is one of these events. I'm serious about this. I I I'm not, I'm not as serious as seasoned as the mayor is. He has more experience at the district. But in my almost two years there, they care nothing about us, and we have to change that. That's that's my point. And and I I'm a one, if we can work within, let's do it. But if we can't, we need another plan. And I think our strategic plan, which is what this is, is to get a better deal for our taxpayers, whether it's inside the district or outside, and I think it should be stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counsel Anishakawa just raised her hand as well.
I just wanted to say I support what Counselor Jaguars is saying. I have had a concern primarily from a planning perspective in and that, in fact, are what what the Township of Muskoka Lakes, and we've already identified that that were unique and special. But the Township of Muskoka Lakes is vision generally is not recognized under the district plan, and I would fully support Counsel Jaguars in us moving forward on that.
Thank you, Counselor. Your worship, that brings us to the end of our time. We did get through all our activities. So just in terms of the look ahead to the next workshop, we'll review the elements that we just came through today. So we'll we'll take a couple days to to turn this around for you. And then we're going to talk about how we want to measure ourselves, particularly at the at the goal level. And then also surface things that will be important for us to keep in mind as we're sharing this with the public and thinking through the practicalities of undertaking the initiative. So what do we need to keep top of mind from an implementation consideration perspective as well? And then that will wrap up our workshop series and 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 I I again, I have to thank everybody for the work they've been putting into this. I think it was an excellent discussion today and a lot, a lot of great ideas and a lot of commonality across the ideas, which is outstanding.
I agree. Thank you for that. And thanks, Chris, and thanks Counsel Everett for taking over while I was gone. Any new business on today's item? I don't have any specifically. And I was trying to turn that window open, don't see any hands up. So I have one final resolution that's moved by Counsel Kelly, second by Counsel Mazan. Be resolved, the committee of the whole meeting adjourn at 11:30 AM. All those in favor? I'm clerk satisfied. Carriage, thank you all. And I think once our next meeting, is it next?
I believe it's next Tuesday, your worship. Same bad, same bad channel.
Channel, same bad time, same channel. Thanks.
Thanks. Bye bye.